They would still be in, left, so they, incomings would still be.
This is, this is an extra representative.
The new get different.
So this has different representatives because you have 62nd, that's 40th and 47th. Yeah. That's all I did.
We had two representatives last year.
Well, really, we had three, if you figure. This, then we had 40th and Swolnyk at 47th.
And the three. It's all, it's Nellie Meyer and Jerry.
Yeah, that's right.
Ramon, it's all.
From Jackson County.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm done with one. Who's that?
I, I have another second.
Okay. All favors, same guy.
Hi.
You get that check out when they change what you have.
Yeah, to be sent to 62nd.
Yeah.
Can I see your first name?
I enjoy the direct, but we want to call it two. What do we want to do about this Three Rivers Incorporated? Don't we research any more into them or?
I know Jackson County approved support.
Okay.
I mean, with a letter of support. I talked to Senator Hill in our kneecap meeting the other night. She said they, like they supported ourselves.
Does that look any tax dollar implications as far as?
I don't, anyway, I, anyway, I understood, not, not necessarily this year, but if, if some of the grant funding and stuff would happen, you know, then they may come back and, and ask, but she didn't specifically ask for anything on that. But I said that probably just a letter of support. It doesn't say anything about this about.
No, I'm curious, like overall tax, I mean, does it just add more overall tax burden to the system, I guess? Is there need, I guess, if there's some duplication services, I guess, definitely a question.
You always got, you always gotta look at that. It sounds like they're still unable to enable everything that goes in there.
Making anything up for it. So that's a big question, is it just?
Well, I have a brother, along with his no, Donald, who tied, who tied to it at this point. I got the impression they were pretty much all for the, sorry. Yeah. Well, this, okay, reasonable kind of meeting, but I, if you want to go.
Okay.
You're a hair or you're, you're on that.
You have hair, isn't it?
Yeah. You want us to watch him too?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know a whole lot about, I mean, I'm trying to help break a client's sign, but I just don't know a whole lot about, you know, I just don't know a whole lot about those groups. I'm looking on the website to see what they.
Is your hair, what do you think?
What time does he use?
Uh, he likes to leave about five thirty.
We, I mean, you guys look that off.
Let's, let's have to see if we can talk to Jerry because does that, would that, I mean, should talk to him if that's where Jerry, would he know?
That's what I thought, and it sure seemed like it was an awful lot of.
Let's just put it on for me and maybe see if we can get Jerry to.
About that, Three Rivers thing, I guess I just don't, once you came up and explained, I was kinda confused, it just seemed like the, the stuff that June Services was doing.
Well.
Cause there was nothing before, it was just popped up out of nowhere, and I still don't even really know anybody that actually went to Abel.
I do.
You do?
Yeah, uh, cause they couldn't get services from anywhere else and was any recognized disability and you're able to keep his kids because of it.
Really?
But not that there wasn't another agency that should have done the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it's a morning disability.
And they are, mm, something.
Abel, Three Rivers.
Three.
Where are you all?
Abel. You mean, so, we're talking about Abel or?
Three Rivers.
No, Abel.
Not Abel.
Uh, that was the picture.
Mm-hmm.
Does Pat give up today?
Yeah, City of, so I assume you've been around nine thirty or so.
Um, I had a conversation with Brett Teeters in Texas, uh, this morning, and he is working on getting through the bids as soon as he can. He says about every two days, there's some issues there with those two accidents that, uh, passes and, but, um, he's going to pursue, he's gonna recontact this company in Kansas City to see if the, the down payment can be waived.
Okay.
And he's also going to, these individual, I said, well, have them submitting combined business so that we wanna, I think we lean towards one company doing both, so similar. And I said, if you're happy with, uh, what they're doing, use this as kind of the general spec sheet to make sure that everybody bids the same. So he's gonna, he's gonna do, he's gonna have that, he's got other companies, two other companies that knows, uh, that they work with. Kansas City is by far the closest one, he said, their next closest one is maybe Northern Iowa. So, uh, that would be, uh, maybe the, uh, time factor. I need to be in New York, Kansas City, that's.
Okay.
I just, I guess, I'm very eager to go along with you.
Yeah, any other company that you've heard anything about, was that Denver, or was a big company that does a lot?
When I was, when I was coming around online, there's, there's several companies out there. There's one, there's a pretty big one in Ohio, and they, they deal with use and just rebound and, and, you know, as far as that goes, that's pretty good, a distance stickers. But this company, he just has really good, been using it for quite some time. He said they have directly used it, but like I said, that Ford has used them, um, and those things got prior, they've taken it or used them, so. He had with Rescue, they had a rescue meeting the other night, and if they give up, they're like, well, it sounded probably like, uh, they thought maybe they would, somebody would be interested, maybe get more training to be becoming T's and, uh, knowing that Texas would be first and after HR and encourage them, they may be more interested in the department, so. Anyway, that's another part, yeah, it was good. And I, and I also told him, I said, neither's gonna be, trying to get the word out that any other one of the cities will be county primarily, here at the city, they wanted him to come and make some kind of short presentation or answer his questions, I thought it'd be good, good PR, and he said, yeah, he'd be willing to, he or she, you know, come and do that stuff.
Yeah, I think it's good from front and, uh.
Well, you, you, and that's a face, you know, to, to it, and, and if they got any questions, it's, it's, uh, it's a little, so. Oh, yeah, what he said, he proposed to him, see if they would, you know, agree to sign, agree, certainly get him, uh, Skydew equipment on that loan, just, we, you know, we agreed that, uh, that was, you know, after the first year, well, the place that they want in that first year, the amount would be terrible, so, so that's what he's, so that way we can do, you know, what you suggested is that time you could do with the purchase, it'll all, and, uh, with that, he agreed to two, if we could do two, it would serve a boost as a wealth act. We've put this thing off for years, and we're still gonna have one, still have one, so get the fleet, so. Then maybe probably a bit later down the road, so.
Or if they're bidding, we can try. You're gonna do all three at once, but stagger them out.
Well, I'd like to see what comes up, go off the puzzle, and, uh, with the hundred and fifty, that we have a lot of, there's plenty of personnel there, and you could, we're probably gonna be making sure that, uh, part of our, or, you know, uh, up to date, or anything. It would sound like we weren't, we weren't gonna get all, we weren't gonna get to do this stuff.
So they just, I don't know. Is there a show up to the day?
If, if we all went, we had to post comments, and, uh, give it to me. Yeah, it's, it's a little. What? Morning. Morning. Morning, sir. charged with felony arson? And I says, what are you talking about? Well, it was.
About, how they broke on that?
Well, okay, what, what, what the deal was, was that.
Oh, this is a joke?
It's a joke.
Oh.
There, there was a sports writer back in Warden Town who was basically knocking their West Virginia team, and just said, uh, California may face fourth degree arson, felony arson, led off to say, you know, I guess there's, West Virginia has a tradition of, at the end of the game, they burn so, something, some of the central story, whatever and stuff, and, uh, but anyway, it's on, oh my gosh, what do you do, go start one on fire, or even or something. But what it led up to was Police Chiefs was close, and he, he, he needed to be chartered because he burnt the secondary all the way along. She was all worried that, oh man, I won't get the play, if he was in a fourth degree felony, this is three years.
Didn't he get married this summer?
Yeah, he got married this summer.
Girl like you know for a month or something before he got married?
Oh, I didn't know that.
But, uh, it's interesting what.
Yeah.
I talked to Jim Landry this morning, he is, uh, at the conference for the running software, so he's not here. Jeff had suggested a, an executive session for a model of the personnel matter, Monday it probably would be better if I didn't do that. He's not, he'll be back unless, uh, unless there's something that we can talk about today.
We're going to, we're going to.
Next, that's not quite really uncertain, uh, where they are in that position.
Okay.
Uh, I also submitted back a, uh, a contract grab to Devon Law, uh, who were arguing about some of my plans, but I expect to have that, whether on, uh, for, for consideration.
Okay.
Uh, you were here, uh, earlier, uh, I had a conversation with Brett Teeters from Texas this morning on the way in, and, uh, he's in the process of getting two more bids, uh, and I suggested that he bid, that he suggested bids come in individually and what they would do if it was combined, that they got both of them, in other words. So if we decide what we do want, say, if we had that option, and the other option would be that, uh, there would be no down payment, that the paper would be full sometime during the first week of July, he was gonna call the Kansas City company back and talk to them, and I said, well, you need to, you need to talk to, to Pat, I said, if you're happy with the specs or what they recommended to do on those two, that we need to maybe use as the baseline spec sheet, so that everybody's bid is the same. So I indicated, he maybe I'll try to talk to you to make sure that that's, you know, that's all proof that we have to send out official bid sheet or something, so.
Okay. I, I got back, uh, from the list server, I got back my name, the county's, uh, actually that wasn't from the list server, that was when they called me, but I didn't know, that's me, that's only response, I don't, the list server was, uh.
Was that a email?
What's her email?
Well, and he, Kansas City's the closest to it, he said they've never directly had worked down, but it had, uh, Brown County's used it, uh, Osage County used it prior to Texas taking over, and there is another, the next closest one, the way he talked is in Northern Iowa, and I think, I'm pretty sure there's one somewhere, uh, in Ohio, because when I was a kid, runner, so, there's a pretty big company back there that handles new, used and rebounds, so, but he's gonna try to have it as soon as possible, because he said, he said about every two days they're having issues, so.
Yeah, I, I don't remember the numbers this year, but last year was forty thousand dollars on maintenance vehicles, more than half of it was that vehicle, so. So, the time limit, I've been smoking six.
Have you had a chance to talk to John Jacobson last year?
Probably not, about, about taking the, taking it without service, I've not talked to him, I haven't.
Well, and Brett, I talked to Brett about that, we, you know, we've still got two units that have to be, I mean, the one's not quite as modern, but, uh, you know, the one unit doesn't handle the approval, you know, J D could be moved, put it down here, be used to, to your own. Right, I think, yeah, and I did suggest, I said, well, maybe, you know, knowing the volume calls, I mean, if we get the fly car ready to go in twenty-five days, maybe we could start up a magnet, you know, or you got an all-teacher service out there, and you know, uh, or something, you know, if we need an extra, an extra vehicle, so.
But the one that they use as rescue two doubles the ambulance, is that right?
Yeah.
I think it's in pretty decent shape, it's pretty decent shape.
It's, it's ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, but it's in good shape, yes. Yeah, it can work either way.
Okay.
Got the other, that's a good rescue, so.
We wouldn't tire them, take it. We were maybe being a pinch out, they need those.
Three.
Which three?
It'll be three after the two, so five.
We got five.
We got five total. So you have three still available to use with two over, out, six on it?
It's probably gonna make sense, I mean, just take one, I mean.
I don't even need two at once, but.
Yeah.
Well, if they have a wreck out there and they need the rescue vehicle, is that the rescue vehicle they use, or is that backup rescue vehicle too?
Well, I think it's the rescue, but, but you don't think that we.
Is that the primary rescue?
Well, we're out there, I think, but aren't there two rescue?
We have one here, we have the rescue.
Yes, one or two of them, that too. I think there are two rescue vehicles in.
Is that the primary rescue?
Well, we're out, yeah, so. So there'd be, there'd still be two others, but yeah, you would be, and, so maybe, maybe that, uh, the, the, the med three doesn't need near as much time, can be done a lot less time, we just get it done, and, you know, some of the one, and then on the other hand.
Stick it out, yeah. So. That makes most sense, it's all with a shorter time for them to get fixed, but we need to get permission from, actually, that'll, we'll do that.
Which I think they'd be, as long as we supply, you know, another unit, but it is our obligation, even under our mutual contract, and we, we're in charge of people, we're fairly responsible for the equipment, so. I just don't want, I don't want to make sure that, you know, a vehicle that needs service, so.
If you're figuring out the reasons, John, we had nods for a fire call, we had, we arranged for Kansas.
Yeah, I talked, I talked to John, John's ready, he said, just let him know, he, he wants a life, that's what John was, and he said, no problem with his budget, he just, he just go ahead, we take it over, and then, a lot, whatever the value of this is, and we re-credit his budget then, next year.
You're talking with him officially?
Yes.
From the commission?
First.
Official from the commission?
I just asked him if it was gonna be available.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we have to.
We have to.
We have to commission.
We will, we will, but all I'm saying is, is that he is willing to do it, I mean, somebody's gotta take the lead, we gotta get this thing going, we can't sit here on hands either, so.
I didn't know, well, really, I think a municipal car, I mean, you get one done before the end of the year, then you've got four, available, we take one out, even, we have options.
Well, the fly car's gonna have to be ready by the first year.
But is it gonna be, we don't need it, we've got five instances in your fleet, you figure one's out at a time, you still got four.
Well, that's what you have to decide, I mean, that's within the contract, that's what they're thinking on the remnants, fly car, two hands.
I, I'm, uh, I'm right there with you guys, but, but, in the negotiation, there was the point that I, I thought you had a fly car, and then I had a full-time staffed ambulance, but that's not what's in our agreement, that we have two full-time staffed ambulances and then the fly car.
So we'll have four ambulances? Something confused, we have, we'll have four ambulances?
Yeah.
But only two staff?
Only two staff, twenty-four seven.
But what about transport?
Right now, we have, well, I, I think the contract says that that's the minimum, not the maximum, um, my expectation is that they're going to have another ambulance staffed every day, they have transfers, uh, and that may be that they're going to try to have one that does transfers from both, uh, gaps and for here, but I don't know if that'll be that part of it, with, uh, that's, with the phones on. The fly car concept, to me, made more sense if you were still trying to use on-call personnel, if you have somebody there immediately and have somebody that will trail on later, uh, but that's not the, the law, the contract before.
So the fly car's strictly just on-call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, fly car, but that person, it's going to have paramedic on it, and, uh, what's been described to me is that that paramedic would probably be the best trained, is going to go pretty much to every call, but then instead of going to the hospital or waiting around at the hospital after they deliver somebody, the person will be back in service immediately, instead of waiting for the, to clean up the trucks and change the, whatever they change, and really drop something off.
There's a chance that some of that could, you know, you have to get this first year and then come back and propose it, you know, I don't, we're not using that, so.
Well, maybe, maybe we want a short executive session.
Yeah, we'll. Thirty minutes?
I think that'd be more than I thought.
Okay.
I'm moving, we're moving to an extension, not exactly personnel, for thirty minutes, come out at.
Ten fifteen to fifteen.
Yes, if that's what.
What is that?
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All favors, single question?
Yeah.
Don't, don't press.
Started it after the beginning, you have to work with it after, so I appreciate that. Thank you, yeah. We're, we're always either starting, working, or in the, our employment, or whatever, we give it back, so, we're all just temporary employees, no such thing as employment. You know, those things now, you were there, you, you saw the need, you understood the need, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
You get someone?
Yes, thank you.
I'll talk to Jim, find out the details, and, uh.
Right, come on, man.
Yeah, we'll make that official, keep all the paperwork in order, but I ain't done yet, if you're still on.
Okay.
I can.
It's a purpose, man.
Thanks for calling.
Have a wonderful rest of your day.
Yeah.
Enjoy the weather.
I'm gonna go finish my walk.
Matt, can I ask you a question on the insurance? Just talking about ambulance before, but does the county provide the insurance on these ambulance?
No.
No, why don't I ask someone?
We don't have vehicles.
On, on the, for, for next year, Texas, my contract, they're providing vehicles, only vehicles.
So we only provide for what?
I guess we're gonna provide proper insurance on it, they're gonna provide, or we're gonna provide casualty, they're gonna provide collision, liability, so. I talked with, with.
Tom Joe?
Tom Joe about it.
About you, you made it on. How do you feel, we need to put it on?
Well, you fill out a list of all, is that what it is, yeah, they should be on that list, but, uh, I think it's to provide liability. We have ten, but we have, yes, if the three that'll be on one of them, that'll be on us.
Okay.
If I'm not wrong, that's.
I guess I need information on those then.
Well, I think you should just fill in the list, for, for him.
I don't have the hospital, those vehicles. I have all the vows that.
You probably got an equipment list, but I don't.
Yeah, we, we did a little bit of stuff.
You know what I'm saying, I don't have that part.
Yeah, we, we did a, a little bit of stuff.
Do we have a current, do we have a current list of all properties?
They will say, yeah, it seems like it's been offering it.
We have reviewed that, we've reviewed that once a year.
Yeah, it seems like it's just not, I don't think that's for you to review.
Yeah.
Kind of find out. Kind of commissioners on this one.
Sounds like it was probably not all, all equipped, maybe.
No, be or not, just to know. Yeah, if you would like to take her.
Commissioner Sheila? Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, how much, how many gallons are you looking at?
Nothing, nothing, two hundred.
Okay.
Two hundred, okay, this test fly, the contamination was.
Mm-hmm.
Complete, so they're getting ready to call next year, and that's why I come up here, so.
Okay.
Trial over.
Okay, what do you guys typically use in the past for the winter?
I don't know, it's good.
Okay, so, seventy-five eighty would probably. Mm-hmm, um, you wouldn't be, like, on a, like, divorce winner, for example, like, just even like a couple years ago, would you use, like, an O nine? Okay.
I think it's more than today, that I, that I was true, that it's probably, anyway. Do I just try to work on this? Well, so every time I listen to, uh, it's like.
What was that, three sixteen?
What's that?
Yeah. Um, yeah, definitely a propane, especially for winters, so. So, um, fill up the diesel, um, the gas and the propane, I think we're still probably, we're still breaking that table, we're on the good. And how many gallons of gas are we looking at? Mm-hmm, so you're probably putting about two, two fifty, two seventy? And then, how much propane do we have to fill in? So, for about four hundred some? Okay. Will that, will the propane carry you through the winter? Okay. 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 Yeah, um, you're well within budget, um, to do that, so also, it's gonna be right around a little over seventeen hundred dollars, so, between all three of those, so. For January, propane, okay. And the gas and diesel, easily carry you through the winter?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Mm-hmm. Oh, wow, okay. Okay. April, April on gas.
Okay.
Well, you're, you're within budget, so you could go ahead and get it, uh, get those three filled up. That work, is that it? Okay, thank you. I'm back. Yeah, I kept talking in the background, she was trying to talk. It's not big, they did it that often, yeah. Yeah, okay, it's very good on gas.
Yep.
This drop down, it's just equal, or. Yeah, that's a carry-through.
They got three thousand, thirty-seven, they should be getting thirty-one hundred left in common, they're running pretty close on it, but they don't have that. Track you, I figured, because that, we're flying that to next year.
Yeah, actually, in a diesel, for a case of water scenario.
Yeah, they should have, I mean, a little more, if it was, if you, uh, if it's cold, it's snow, and blood, you know, it would be worse.
They're easy to pretty good about getting you receipts on purchases, they, they do a pretty good job.
Yeah, she's great sometimes.
Yeah. I thought I was pretty good on Monday, um, concerning that, uh, the future position, you probably can discuss that.
Well, I'm glad to think that there's at least a task, which is, so, look, uh, do that, concern, um, and the four points, the one that, uh, we were probably, now, needs to help with is the recycling, maybe per se, most of that work is done. Part about technology, which would have been creating a learning position, I would think, that that would easily be taken, taken care of there, and then the other two is, I mean, revitalization is not that difficult, so, it's just a matter of any resolution, basically, for their continuous, uh, I think that'd be fairly simple. And the budget, yeah, I was new, and I could use, and we all thought we could use the help, but I'm hoping that some of the seminars you go to, that, that, uh, you know, that's, uh, uh, where I see one of the four, there's some justification, there's three areas that I question whether there's enough there to, uh, to justify, uh, the position, so. I thought you said that.
So, you said there's one area that's.
The recycling, but we know that there's the first year or so, there's going to be some problems and issues, but that, that wouldn't justify, you know, full-time, it may be supplementary or something, if we, if that needed to help. We're gonna have some appeals, we're gonna have some questions, uh, we gotta continue to collect some data, but, uh, other than that, these are two jobs, the running commissioners, and, uh, and this kind of flows into what the full-time tech person should be, be doing.
Well, I think some of that, if you look at some of the, uh, you know, as far as like determining what type of systems or needs.
Right, that, that would be tech person, I mean, you want somebody that's got tech experience, because you want, they're trying to coordinate all the departments, uh, the kind of software programs, and you want, uh, you want somebody that knows, knows what this is, and, you know, or gonna be best, that, that would be compatible, or that all the departments could possibly use, and of course, you have to sell that to them, because, uh, here again, when we're getting into the elected offices, and you can't just go tell them that's what we're gonna do, it's gonna be a, I guess, transition, and what is living, and, and trying to get some of that, that work, but, uh, I just don't know, to the point that we need, maybe, at this point, I mean, it does, it, it questions, it questions our role as commissioners somewhat, in terms of a couple of these things, everything, when we.
We're calling, we set policy and budget, so.
Right, right, but this has to do with the budget. And we, you know, we, we have worked, uh, this, number three has to do with, uh, with basically the budget, submit the budget. And maybe, you know, we do work with departments, and we're integrating, we work with, uh, Malley on, on your court, so.
Also, that was the implementation, we haven't implemented it, so.
Right, exactly, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, I understand, it's a beginning process, but, uh.
Tom, beautiful.
Um, as far as, um, creating that position, I'm on deck to stand, but, uh, I shouldn't be, uh, making a decision on that, I think, leave that up to the next person that, uh, put this chair. I'm not going to go on there, or.
I guess, I guess my suggestion, we can continue, we don't have time for it, but, after the election, uh, maybe we can get some input, I mean, as far as, I mean, you know, we can, we can discuss, you know, further as far as that goes and see, but, uh, we don't have to do anything officially until, uh, right away on that, so, uh, from my impressions, with the debate that day, is, uh, this is, this is a county administrator, but it's.
That's a, for this firm?
It's, it's one step closer to that, than either the, the candidates or figure out it.
But this isn't a county administrator's role.
I, I know it's not, but, there's a lot of duties in here, that would be the same, as a county administrator.
A county administrator has authority over departments, though, he has no authority, he reports to us, so it's completely different than a county administrator.
Well, but, but this person is reporting to us. And if they're gonna be implementing these, I mean, it, yeah, I understand, I mean, it's, it's, it's not exactly, but it's, it's a long, uh, technical line, but, uh, I mean, I, I think, I think we at least need to give you the book and, and the book of the justification of it, because, uh, um, otherwise, we may do some random justice, and our role as commissioners, in terms of the kind of compensation we're getting, we're gonna turn some of this, uh, forward to, uh, the Senate House, so.
I don't think we're really turning anything over to anybody, if you look at, uh, at their roles and what they're doing, the other thing, it'd be so much closer to one with, with the accountant, but, we haven't taken any action, there's not been anybody.
We, we would do, we would do the revitalization, and it's basically approved.
That's legislation, that's what it's for, so we have to go through legislature to get that approved, so.
Not major representation, it's just a privilege, it's a doctor's plan, unless, if it's actually going to.
That's through legislature.
Well, it's terminated, and that.
Our, our plan is terminated in two thousand and thirteen, but is the statute terminated?
Yes, the authorization to, to continue to, yes.
You have to go through legislature.
So the legislature has to re-approve, yeah, and, and of course, that's just an option, the counties don't have to.
True.
I would think that that would be. But you don't know, I would think that'd be a big issue, for one, hassle, for why you wouldn't renew something like that.
Uh, there were a lot of things that happened in the legislature last year that I wouldn't.
Well, now, you have to, I agree, I agree.
But the elect will be out of the way, because I have a year of.
Not quite, because that ends in October.
So it's not, it's not calendar year.
No, that ends in October.
I mean, the legislature shouldn't have an election to worry about, because it's October thirteen, but, I think it's issue, I think, uh, December of thirteen, or?
October, yes, that, yeah.
October, statewide, doesn't it state?
I believe so.
And, and the state, the state has to approve.
Yeah.
With all the counties.
Yeah.
So we'd have to get legislative approvals.
Yeah.
Special.
Well, I mean, continue to redo it. Well, yeah, I think those are things we can discuss, what, you know, you can see, you know, I'd be curious to see how, you know, uh, other, other counties, I mean, they benefit, I mean, I, I think it's benefited, it's, I don't know, I mean, I, I do think that there's probably a large percentage of people who've done something, but, in any event, um, it, it, it causes, it is causing people to be upset, because people who have really improved and done anything, don't benefit from it, whereas the people that, that did benefit from it, and, uh, but, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of other things that, you know, you know, whether it's city counties, or whatever, bringing businesses, you have tax exemption and stuff, to try to lure them, you have to, you have to put some kind of thing out there somehow, but, uh, I think at this, it started in ten years, it's been a seven now, and it.
No, that depends on what you're doing, if, if you rebuild, it's, if you build new, it's seven, existing structures, excluding one, that's another.
Right, exactly, it's just, uh, you know, I do know we settled, in two thousand and thirteen, we bought, we're there, settled, real, new house, and it's all, uh, out in the county, so, it will. Seven years from now, I have a pretty good plan.
But it's, it's really not a county administrator's role at all, I mean, it's not a county minister or county manager, because they, they have a lot of people. They're, they're, there's just some areas. They're what, we have, there's just some areas in there that we have some gaps that really need to be addressed.
Like, like I say, we can keep it in file, and, but I'm, but on my talk, I'm looking after what I heard, and I, I think we just put it a hold for now, but, uh.
Uh, as far as, uh, taking effect January the first, it really can't happen because the commissioner don't come on till January the fourteenth at noon. That's one, so, so. Uh, you can do that, you know, make a decision then, and still let it play it down.
I can understand the decision, I can understand what we would want to, is it, you're in the middle of the work, or you want to be a part of it, so.
Yeah, that's true.
But I do wanna make it clear that it's not a county administrator, or municipal, so.
I understand.
And there's some county use account coordinator that don't even, they're doing those very same things, but they're on. Things don't go down the easy speedo. What will be our plans after November? Especially considering the solid waste and the recycling.
What is, what is the actual, what do we have, did we?
I think we have, well, some of those towards the end of the.
Right. Um, well, is there, what do we have, you know, is this or that much that we have until now, end of year? I mean, if we're not gonna be, I, I would guess that after getting the tax paid, there's gonna be some questions, you know, to do out, but, uh, as far as us actually taking the action, there's not gonna be a whole lot, uh. I mean, maybe need to talk to Matt and see if he's gonna need some help, I mean, if we're gonna be collecting more data or something like that, why, and it takes some justification to pay. Otherwise, I'm not for sure, in my understanding was, is that's, that's what we figured, we had everything entered, and, uh, but, uh, I know this is gonna, we're gonna, can be, uh, I think that might be worked out in that, because if he's, he's even gonna have to get Stacy or somebody to help, you know, uh, teach them how to innovate, but that, that, if we don't extend that, so. And other components, I mean, I haven't checked how it's gonna affect the budget, and what's coming out of solid waste, but.
Solid waste, you would check.
I think we're pretty good checking, yes. Yeah, we're, we're just. Can't figure out why we're running out of time, get the trash. I mean, I hear that we've got. There, I'm gonna renew, uh, renew the hands all the time. But they can remain with three percent increase this year.
Uh, they come pretty quick during November, so I'm gonna make a.
Yes.
Decision, because we can't just start a system and shut it down, we need to have people that were there in the implementation, that's, that's faltered.
We need, yeah, we need to figure that out, we need to talk to Matt.
Do you want Matt, nobody?
For?
No, you don't want it at three o'clock in the evening?
Yeah.
Meeting at three thirty?
Do we have to, uh, do a revolution for setting the fees? Dollars?
You already did that, you already did.
Yeah. And we, we're the number.
Well, we put a.
A maximum of seventy dollars.
So, I mean, if it was cap, we couldn't go over that, but we had the flexibility to adjust it down when we needed to. You know, we did that. That is a lot, so.
So, as far as the Monday meeting, that's still a real little thing, and.
Yes, it's, it's working out pretty good for everybody right now.
Yeah. It's more, it's more fun to me.
But we're still not permanently, too. Okay.
Like, pressing already.
Uh, I, I, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more flexible, I think, you know, Jeff, I would do, it, it should work with the camp. And, and the fact that, does it work with?
It is much better for me, the camp.
If you know money, I can add somebody that has it off, I mean, money is just, you know, it could be quite heavily.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, it, it allows, I mean, it, it, it opened the opportunity, I mean, for someone that had agreements or something, or, they could probably get all work, if, if, you know, it may not be a, I, I know, we're acting, you know, our days, they are like two sixty two, something like that, like that, so I mean, it gives somebody like that the opportunity, so. No, I, I've heard it, so. Love you.
I'm gonna have to pick up my granddaughter, she has mine, it's over five.
Well, yeah, we try not to go over five, but.
But that's. Have you guys heard anything from the homework about?
Well, three o'clock. Haven't heard anything.
I haven't either.
I have some people to jump to later.
Yeah.
They have a five o'clock, or I, I, I bet that, that's been, that's something new, that's been for a while.
Well, if, you know, you could do that every couple of months or something, if you want to do something like that, I would be, I'd be open to that. I just, I'm not crazy about doing it in winter time, it gets dark a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
But, here again, I mean, to me, if you try it, and you get, you get some involvement, too, that, that's fine, but if you try it, and it doesn't serve the purpose of what it did, then it's no good, it's useless, but, you know.
That's what I feel about it.
So.
No, or at least make it a challenge, to try.
Exactly.
And then what, smoke, that would fall, all you have to do is, is.
Really. It's not, you know, we don't want to set, we're making agenda.
Yeah, but.
You could have a time, you could have, you know, have a time set aside for.
Public time.
Carrying, carrying, you know, it's another, another school where you only get that, everybody's allowed, they accept the five minutes, so.
Yeah, I've got a couple of county government, I've tried this, I think it's, uh, we should probably propose to.
But if you get the care of that. And then like the first one to look at, and then after the rest of the year, we'll get the size, and we're gonna ask the owners to give us, and so.
So we're gonna vote off on voting on?
Yeah.
That's a special position.
Correct, yeah. I'm not taking any good.
Yeah, it's one, it's one for each.
Okay.
I'm a little great. I think it should be true.
So moved, second?
All favors seem missing out.
I.
Nine, ten fifty?
Yeah.
Who's calling it?
No.
Did you have to take any action after that executive question?
No.